I'd like to open tonight's meeting. This is the Stanhope Board of Education meeting, our regular meeting for September 20th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Valletto?
Here.
Mrs. Carroll? Mr. Valley?
Here.
Mr. Valardo?
Here.
Mr. Yagnum?
Here.
Mr. Sharpstein?
Here.
Mr. Mustatello?
Here.
Here.
The New Jersey Sunshine Law Statement, this is to advise the general public and to instruct...
Debbie, mic's going to be on.
I'm sorry. This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that within compliance of Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, entitled the Open Public Meetings Act, Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the Office of Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the Municipal Clerk of the Borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. Stanhope's mission statement: The Stanhope School District will provide a diverse and challenging educational environment that encourages individual initiatives, force their success through teamwork, promotes accountability, demonstrates a passion for educational excellence, and ensures student achievement related to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The Stanhope School District is committed to the development of our students and staff so that individual aspirations can be achieved through their lifelong learning. Tonight, we have several presentations, so I'll turn that over to Mr. Hegeman.
Thank you. Our first presentation tonight is one that I've been looking forward to. Several years ago, our school began an initiative to recognize not just our hard-working staff through the We Are VRS Award, but we also established the Valley Road School Charger Award for Excellence for our hard-working, dedicated, and proud students. The student that I'd like to recognize today is in attendance. His name is Dominic Lalama. He's a current eighth grader here at our school. And the reason that I'd like to recognize him is because of the hard work and his assistance in helping not just Dad through the process of prepping our tech for the school year, but really in all aspects of technology throughout the summer, from cleaning Chromebooks to stuffing Chromebook carts to moving those carts around. There's probably lots of other things that he did that I'm not even aware of, you know, bundling chargers and such. And, you know, at first sight, it's all right, he's doing something to just kind of help Dad, but it's bigger than that because this is his school. And he's going to finish here as an eighth grader, and we couldn't be more proud of the work that he's put in. And I know it's a small gesture, but Dom, I want to thank you very much from the bottom of our heart for just being such a hard worker this summer.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, you reminded me.
My second presentation is much less exciting. It is the HIV Self-Assessment. I feel like I just recently went through our HIV evaluation scores, I think I did. It was either June or July. And that's when the DOE certifies our self-assessment and says, yes, you were truthful. The score that you said you had is in fact the score that we gave you. So this self-assessment is something that's done at the end of the school year. There are eight core elements that our HIV specialist and HIV coordinator go through. I'll read through them in just a moment. But they encompass everything that we have to do about HIV. The eight core elements are as follows. The first is HIV programs, approaches, or other initiatives. The second is training on the Board of Ed-approved HIV policies and procedures, and that training is for our staff. The third is other staff instruction and training programs. The fourth is curriculum and instruction on HIV and related information and skills. The fifth is HIV personnel, making sure that we have the appropriate people in place with the appropriate titles. The sixth, school-level HIV incident reporting procedures, that we're following all of the required procedures throughout the process, through the law. HIV investigation procedure. And the last core element is HIV reporting. So of the possible 78 points, we scored ourselves as a 75, which again is right around the same general area we've been now for several years. Again, I'm proud of our staff, not just our coordinator, HIV coordinator, HIV specialist, Ms. Coppola and Di Cataldo worked very hard to make sure that these procedures are followed and that our kids and our staff are educated. But honestly, our students, our parents, and the rest of our teachers and our staff are just making this a priority. I know this law came into place because bullying in general was often overlooked and brushed aside. And unfortunately, there were several incidents that led to, as most political movements happen, right? Something bad has to happen for something to get done. Well, this hopefully has prevented some of our students, probably a lot of our students, from maybe feeling the effects of bullying that we maybe saw and felt as kids. And I just applaud our staff for continuing to stay vigilant and report what they see. And we'll do everything that we can to make this a safe environment for our students and our staff. So that's pretty much the extent of that presentation. Happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Anyone? Next on the agenda is correspondence. There were two items. Anyone with questions on those two items?
I did. So the non-compliance letter, have you started to like take steps to address? Because it was, looked like there was quite a few things that they found us not in compliance with.
So the non-compliance letter, I'm glad you brought it up, I would have spoke to it either way. It's very specific to a COVID-related mandate called compensatory education. And although the action plan in the letter was extremely detailed, I can very simply explain what we did and what the state wanted us to do that we didn't do. So once the schools were shut down in March of 2020 because of the health pandemic, we took about, I think we took like a long weekend to train our staff on how to use Google Meet and what our expectations were, not just for teaching staff, but for paraprofessional staff and related service staff. And it took a little while, but by the end of that year, we were 100% compliant with remote learning. Our teachers were working every day, our related services. Once it became legal to do so, because initially it wasn't, you weren't allowed to do remote OT, you weren't allowed to do remote PT, and you weren't allowed to do remote speech. Once that law changed, we then moved forward and we offered those services to our students. We then rolled out the following year, if you remember, we did cohorts where kids were coming to school. A lot of the kids were coming to school two or three days, and we had an early dismissal procedure because we couldn't, at the time, safely provide lunches for students to keep them here for the full day. We trained our paraprofessional staff, right? So students who had the support of paraprofessionals or classroom aides, they were online supporting those kids, sometimes working with them one-on-one or two-to-one to make sure that they were getting those supports. It is my opinion that we went above and beyond during that time to make sure that every single student with special needs was supported. The students who were significantly disabled came to school every day. We opened that up for them. After, towards the end of the pandemic, the state passed a law where every school was responsible for conducting an IEP meeting for every single student who was classified during COVID, simply for the purposes of determining whether or not they were owed compensatory education. What that means is, this was in your IEP, the school didn't do what they were supposed to do, therefore you're owed, whether it's more time, more services, or anything like that. We're a small school, we lack resources. However, if you know anything about our student population, we have a significant number of students who receive special services. In order to, with everything else that was going on as a result of the pandemic, hold those IEP meetings for every single kid, even though the parents in most cases didn't feel as though compensatory services were necessary, it would have completely bombarded our child study team. What we elected to do with full transparency is we drafted a letter. We made sure that every single parent of students with special needs received the letter. We outlined what compensatory education is, how you would qualify for services, who you can speak to if you had questions. And it was simply, do you feel as though your child is owed services? If yes, check this box, send it back to us, and we will schedule a meeting for you. And a few parents did take advantage, and we had those conversations. If no, if you felt as though everything was done within your child's IEP, it's the best, you know, of the school's ability, just check no, and we, there's no need to have a meeting. We collected every single form. For any form that we didn't collect, we made sure that we called the parent, we gave them another form. We have forms for every single kid who receives special services. But unfortunately, because we didn't hold a meeting for every single kid, we were found not to be in compliance. So now we will be holding meetings for every single child. And unfortunately, several parents, I'm sure, are not going to want to have to meet to discuss this. But that's what we're going to have to do, and we may have to have meetings without parents. So we will be moving forward with this initiative. I'm meeting with the child study team early next week to put forward a plan and act on this action plan. So as disappointed as I am that we were one of the very few districts audited, I'm disappointed that this was found, but at the same time, I don't think the time in which we had to do this, we had the appropriate staffing to hold these meetings and not fall short somewhere else.
So you said you didn't have the time. Do you feel now we have the appropriate staffing to meet this?
I feel as though we now have our kind of feet underneath us. You know, and I'll speak to this as I discuss the opening of the school year. Things feel different this year. This is the first time in five years we're fully staffed, with the exception of a single cafeteria aide. At any given time last year, I was at least four or five paraprofessionals short, and at most, probably eight or nine, which meant we were using our subpool. I was a paraprofessional, Ms. Coppola, Ms. Di Cataldo, like, that's what we were spending our time doing. And to be able to hold those IEP meetings over those last two years would have been extremely challenging. We're in better shape to do so. I still think it's going to be a little bit of a strain on the team, but we don't have a choice, we're going to get it done. So just, I hope that kind of clarifies why we were found to not be in compliance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Moving forward, you're still on the seat there, Mr. Hegeman, superintendent's report.
All right, so zero HIBs and suspensions up until this point in the school year, which is great. It's a great start. Item two, I wanted to thank Mrs. Procarpio and Mrs. Di Cataldo for, again, putting the flowers at our main entrance. This is an initiative that Mrs. Procarpio started several years ago and has changed the flowers, I don't want to say every month, but every season at least, and we greatly appreciate it. And I think Ms. Di Cataldo saw it the day before school started and panicked and put the flowers in. And I think Cynthia came in like two hours after her and then planted more flowers. So both of their efforts, I really appreciate. It just, it's that one, it's that extra, right? That little extra as you walk into the building that you love to see. As I mentioned, our opening of this school year has been extremely positive. It's been so great to see the kids come in just with youthful exuberance. And to be honest with you, I'm kind of feeling the same thing from our teachers and staff. I can't put my finger on what it is, but there is something different about this year that we haven't felt since prior to COVID. I think, again, being fully staffed is important. For those of you who've spent time in this building in the mornings or have tried to meet with me or Kathy in the office, we spent at least the first hour to hour and a half every day of trying to get people covered, trying to make sure that students who needed support had that support. The teacher who's out sick or their child is out sick had, you know, appropriate, certificated coverage. And knock on wood, wherever it is, that has not been an issue this year. We have not had a single, again, other than the cafeteria aide position, we have not had a single position uncovered. When somebody has been out, we've had substitutes available to cover for them. So I think that definitely plays a part in it. The facelift of the school has been great. When it rains, not having to be concerned about our hallways flooding because the roof is leaking. The kids are super excited about the innovation lab, although we still have some things that need to get done in there. They don't recognize it, they just see it as a cool space that we have not been using, you know, over the last three or four years. So just, again, thanks to the students, the parents for building that positivity and the teachers for just coming to school with a different mindset. It's really made a difference. I wanted to quickly thank the SCA, the Stanhope Education Association, and our Home and School Association, both for hosting separate welcome-back lunches for our faculty and staff over the first couple of weeks of school. We held our back-to-school night last Thursday. It was pretty well-attended by elementary parents, maybe not so much by the middle school parents, but that's typical, you know, when you're six or seven years and going to the same school for the same back-to-school night, that eventually it wears off a little bit. We did have, which I was really excited about, several community organizations in attendance. We had Ginny's House, which provides support for everybody, but they're especially looking to support us to identify and support abused children. Boy Scouts, Lenape Valley was here with some swag, showing off some of their sports gear and the items that they made in their own STEM lab. Project Self-Sufficiency was here, and the Civil Air Patrol, which was pretty cool. They got talking to us and learned a little bit about our Veterans Day program. And my understanding is that they are looking to see if they can bring their color guard here for the Veterans Day program, which we're very excited about. My last item, which is not on the agenda, I just wanted to plug our Walk to School Day on October 4th, Wednesday, October 4th. It's a wonderful, hopefully the weather will be good, but even when it hasn't been, you know, it's still been pretty well-attended. Students will meet, whether it's parent volunteers or school staff at designated meeting areas, and walk the routes to school that we've established. Transoptions, no, it used to be Transoptions. Avenues in Motion, used to be Transoptions, is a wonderful organization that provides resources and programs for us for free. They host the Walk to School Day, and for years, they've been doing two separate traffic safety programs for our students. So this year, they're going to be doing Traffic Safety Town with our fourth grade, where they set up like a little mat with a town in the gym, and they go through how to safely cross the road, you know, what the different signs mean, which side of the street you should be walking on, which side of the street you should be biking on, et cetera. And they do the Ready to Walk and Roll program with our first grade. So we're excited to partner with them again. And any board members who are interested and willing, we're still looking for volunteers. If you want to, you know, maybe host a meeting point, just let me know, and, you know, we can set something up. I typically start down at the police station, I have the longest walk-up. So I'll be in sneakers and shorts hopefully that day.
I volunteered my husband for our neighborhood.
That's all I got for the report today.
Anyone with questions on any of those items? Business administrator?
I have a very short list, which I'm always happy about, but our annual audit is about to be underway. They send us a list as to what they want us to grab before they come in, and we are in the process of getting those documents together. Normally, we do it a little bit earlier, but they gave us a little bit of a break with all the construction and everything, and they said they would back off for a second. So they're back on, and we're collecting all the data, and then they'll come in and go through all our books and everything.
Good. Any questions? Moving forward with the agenda, next is curriculum update.
Just wanted to make a brief note, we've mentioned it earlier. Rubicon is the curriculum platform that we had used now probably for six or seven years. And one of our initiatives has been to move away from that to the free Google Drive. We have successfully exported everything that we need to make that happen. And although the drive's not fully loaded with all of our approved curriculum, we do not need to renew the Rubicon Atlas, which is about, I think, a $3,500 to $4,000 savings, which is excellent. So I just wanted to point that out, and I'll provide an additional update next month, hopefully when we get some of these approved curriculums online and accessible for our parents and community.
And that's a real little ahead of schedule, right? You're looking for the end of the year?
Definitely by the end of the year is how the goal was drafted. I would like to have already had some of it available online by now, but we're not. I wouldn't say we're behind, I wouldn't say we're I wouldn't say we're ahead, ahead. We're, we're, we're in okay shape.
Okay. Committee reports, first is Personnel, Curriculum and School Climate Culture. Mrs. Harold is not here.
Yeah, I'm going to speak on our behalf. I had a question about moving over to Google Drive though, real quick. Who's going to have administrative access?
Well, administrative access, Mrs. DiCataldo, our principal is our, she coordinates the curriculum. I would have administrative access probably, you know, from a technology perspective. And that's just a matter of adding and moving, you know, the, the curriculum that the board has approved. Once the board approves the curriculum, that's what's there. It's not going to be, it'll be modified on the side and then again revisited and revised and hopefully reapproved the following year. But it'll be as, as drafted and approved on the drive.
Okay, great. As Gil stated, I'll be speaking on behalf of Jennifer. Item by item?
I would highlight key points.
Some key points, let's start off with the RTL, RTL specialist. Fortunately, we found somebody that will be taking over Ms. Becknell's position after she leaves in October. It's going to be somebody currently on the staff. We discussed the importance of filling her vacant spot. She is a, can I say openly yet?
It's on the agenda, so it's public knowledge.
She's currently a third grade teacher. She's excited for the opportunity. We're excited to have her to fill that role. It's a very important role. Ms. Becknell serviced over, I believe, 30 students. What they're going to do is really take their time to find the right teacher to fill that void for third grade. Whoever we put in that spot, we don't want it to just be a temporary fix. Mr. Hagman's pretty confident that he can attract good talent to fill that spot when, once it's vacant. And it's basically it for that one.
Can I just speak to that real quick?
Yeah, of course. It was kind of big then.
Our optimistic timeline is to have a candidate available so that we do not have any vacancy once Mrs. Becknell ends up leaving and taking her new position. There's going to be lots of factors that we need to fall in our place in order to make that happen. We have to have a strong candidate who does not need to give notice anywhere else. Because if we're taking a teacher from another district, typically there's a 60-day notice that, that needs to go there. You know, even if they're working outside of education and they have to give notice, that's, that's definitely an issue that we might have to run into. As I mentioned in the committee though, we're not going to not hire the best candidate just because of a potential 30-day where we have to bring in a long-term replacement. So there's a lot of factors in there. Best case scenario, I'm sitting here for our October meeting and we're, we're back fully staffed and we have a strong candidate in both positions, so.
We discussed extending the library stipend for an additional year. There's still a little bit more to do. They made it clear to the person who's filling that role that it is temporary and she is okay with it. So we do anticipate that not being there going into next year. I'm going to hold off on just a couple of things, including the bathroom procedures, until I have an opportunity to speak with Jennifer. I know she received the reply on our discussion. I just want to talk to her or bring it to public. With that in mind, we also discussed changing for physical education. As you guys might be aware, other districts, including Lenape Valley, do not require students to change for gym. What we're proposing, which I, I agree with, is making it optional for our students to change, change for gym class, aside from your obvious proper footwear or any other safety concerns. So that is something that we wanted to bring forward.
I was able to do a little research, research. I met with the other superintendents in the region. Byram stated that their students are not changing for phys ed. It's not an option. And the reason for that move is, was strictly budgetary. They didn't have staff to supervise the locker rooms. Lenape did state that it was an option, but nobody chooses. As long as they have sneakers, they're good for phys ed. Netcom does require students to change for phys ed. It's the same procedures that we follow here currently, yes.
Okay. But that would be something what we could either discuss as a whole or deliberate. I'm personally a fan of the optional category for students that might not speak comfortable. Back in my day at Lenape, it was required. But it's nice to hear that they've changed it up at the high school. And then lastly, at back to school night at Lenape, the algebra, algebra teacher had mentioned that they, she feels that Stanhope students have fallen behind in regards to, what type of calculators are called?
Mrs. Harold had mentioned that there was a comment made about graphing calculators.
Graphing calculators. Mr. Hagman agreed to follow up at the high school to kind of see if they can elaborate what they're talking about as it was news to him. Did you have an opportunity to speak?
I did. I, I, I'll say that I'm not necessarily prepared to report out on it just yet. But I will tell you that I spoke with both Principal Reynolds and the math supervisor up there, who both stated they were unaware of any shortcomings of, at any curricular areas or content areas from Stanhope students. So they apologized that, you know, that was stated publicly, that Stanhope students specifically, I guess, were behind with the use of the graphing calculator. You know, but as I, as I have more information for the board, I'll, I'll share that out. But that's pretty much the gist of what I got from them.
Thank you for following up. And that'll wrap it up.
Anyone with questions? On any of the items? So the, the third grade position, has it been advertised for? Is that?
It's been posted. We've collected resumes. I have something on the calendar to sit with Mrs. DiCataldo tomorrow to see when we're going to host interviews and just establish that timeline. Again, it's, it's a tight timeline. For those of you who have been on the board for a little while, it's, it's nothing we haven't been able to accomplish in the past. It just takes a lot of, a lot of luck. In some cases, some long hours and support from the board. And, you know, unfortunately, that item that, that I said I didn't want to see again, allowing me to hire staff between board meetings is back on here. And it's solely for that reason, to try to get somebody in that classroom. So again, we, it's a team effort and I couldn't do it without the, the trust and support of the board.
Okay. Anybody else, questions, comments? Moving to Business Services, Facilities and Technology. Matia?
Sure. So I'm surprised Debbie, you didn't take the whole, the whole list this time?
I've learned, I've learned.
And really only one major thing to talk about. Most of our meeting was spent discussing the, the STEM lab, the Innovation Room, and just how the finishings are a little subpar and they're not up to standard of what we wanted to see from the contractor. So we are holding back the retainer until those repairs are made to our liking. And, you know, we are going to take every step we can in terms of, you know, future renovations, making sure who bids and, and again, we have to take the lowest bid that we get. We don't have an option there, but ensuring that we stay on top of who the subcontractors are and who's doing the work. But that was the majority of our meeting. I don't think there was anything else that was major. That was probably 25 minutes of the 30 minutes was talking about the lab and how we're going to make sure it gets back up to par.
You'll see on tonight's addendum, the, the information on the bid opening. So for the HVAC, so if you have questions on that, obviously as we get there, we'll be happy to answer them.
And just to add to that, I did meet with the architects today, two of them, about the STEM lab and went over the punch list. And a couple of things have already been completed, but the list is pretty long, so.
That's why we have punch lists.
That's why we have.
That's why we have, and that's why we take the time to make sure we get the job that we're paying for. Kudos to the people overseeing it. Next is Policy. Tom?
This evening, we have a second reading of a policy pertaining to sick leave and a regulation pertaining to sick leave. The policy and regulation includes language that reflects an, an expansion of allowable uses of sick days. That's in accordance with new state law that pertains to school employees. Connected to that, we have a first reading of a policy in which we have a revision to vacations, holidays, summer schedule, personal days of 12-month maintenance and custodial staff and I believe some other 12-month employees. The reason for this revision is with the new regulation and policy that we will be voting upon tonight as a second reading. We had some conflicting language and some language that was no longer necessary in this other policy. So that policy has been revised so that it aligns nicely with the policy and regulation to be approved with a second reading this evening. Also along those same lines, we are looking to abolish policies and regulations pertaining to sick leave that are no longer necessary due to the updated sick leave policy and regulation that again, we'll be voting to adopt this evening. Any questions?
We've gone over these before, so we're pretty much aligned. Okay. No questions. Next is Sussex County Educational Services Commission. Things there are going well. I reported out last week and we're still there. We have the largest enrollment we had there in years. We're up to 54 students. Things are busy, things are moving. We, I have scheduled for this month, next week, three, three days for committee meetings and a board meeting coming up up there. Project Search is opened. We now have two sites, one at Hackettstown Hospital and one at Newton Hospital. And things are going well there. Questions? Next is my Board President's Report. As far as attending meetings, I attended the, the three committee meetings. I also stopped in several times over the last month to, just to look around and see the construction and see the progress going through. And, and just very appreciative of how well organized the whole thing was from the administrative point of view from here. Not only was all that happening at that time, but right the last week, the furniture for the offices came in and everybody had to switch out their, their furniture during that week, which means you had to empty your offices, empty your file cabinets, take everything out, put all the new furniture in, in between that, get the carpets done, put your furniture back. At the same time, try and open a school. So it was, it was quite a dance happening here. So when, when Steve says that crazy time coming to that opening, believe me, I was, I was here. It was, it was quite a, an orchestrated movement of furniture and materials. And I, I thank everyone involved for doing that. A special thank you because he's here to Nick for looking out for the technology during this whole exchange here and him overseeing it, him ordering materials, setting it up. Steve indicated how much of a help his son was here, helping us get all that set up to run. So that was greatly appreciated. And I don't, every once in a while, I get one of these. And I came in twice to get, pick up one of these and that's my signing. Those are contracts that needed to be signed, checks that need to be signed and those kinds of items. So even though school just began, it was a busy end at the end also. Anybody with questions on that? That takes us to our next section, which is Public Section Number One, which is Agenda Items. Sir?
I just wanted to maybe ask, break down the third grade basic, how many resumes?
To be honest with you, I am not sure off the top of my head. However, if you do end up sticking around towards the end of the meeting, I can do a, a quick glance and, and let you know. One thing I, I did share with the board is if you're going to have to post for a position at any time, but especially the middle of the year, third grade general education is pretty much the one you want to have to post for because that's the one that's, you're, you're most likely to find a quality candidate. It's much more difficult to find a special educator. It's especially more difficult to find an interventionist like which, what Mrs. Becknell is and what Ms. Deano would likely be stepping into. Impossible to find a math teacher or a science teacher. You know, we, we have candidates. I'm not sure exactly how many. I would say we have at least 10.
Any other input, sir? That ends our first public session. Moving on to Travel and Workshop Reports. Anyone have questions? Moving on to Minutes for Approval. These are the minutes for August 30th, 2023, our regular meeting. This is a voice vote. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Motion. Second.
Second. Anybody with questions or discussions or comments on the minutes? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? No? Anyone abstain? Okay. Next is our Administrative Action Items. That's one through six. Is there a motion? Motion?
Second.
Discussion? Our goals are on here. I'm sure you've taken notice of that. Under this.
I did have a question.
Sure.
District number four, the, the preschool program, is that because we are at capacity with Mrs. McNear's classroom or?
We've been at capacity for several years.
I mean, I know when my daughter went through a whole, quite a few years ago, it was pretty packed in there.
It's, we've been at capacity. I mean, technically we're not. Technically, we can, we're allowed to fit way more in there, but I wouldn't due to the safety of our students and the mental health of our teacher. So I say we're at capacity and we've, we have a waiting list every year. The preschool expansion grant opportunity is at least two or three years old now. We have qualified for this grant opportunity in the past, but have not yet really been able to move forward with it because there are a lot of requirements that we haven't been able to fulfill. There's spacing requirements. You have to have a certain number of square footage in the classroom that has a preschool accessible bathroom. There's staff-student ratios. We haven't really had the space here. Having now sold Linden Avenue School to First Impressions Preschool, who partners with the Patcong School District through this preschool expansion grant, what we'd like to explore is whether, whether we can qualify, which we believe we can, for this grant opportunity and partner with First Impressions so that together we can provide free, full day preschool for any eligible student in Stanhope. That's the goal. It has nothing to do with, with anything that's happening here. It has everything to do with us just wanting to expand these opportunities. And even the tuition-based program that we're offering right now would ultimately go away. It would be free preschool for everybody.
Anyone else with questions? Not here anymore. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Battleato? Mr. Harold? Nope, not here. Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes. Next item is Policy Action Items, one through four. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions or concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Battleato?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes. Next is Education Action Items, one and two. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seems kind of crazy to be proven eighth grade trips, right?
So to be honest with you, and this has been a procedure for some time that we, that administratively we haven't enforced. However, with the current bus driver shortage and the increased cost in transportation, we have required our teachers to submit all field trip request forms within the first month of school so that we can take the time to find appropriate transportation. That's where we won't get gouged. Thankfully, Lenape has helped us out tremendously with our transportation needs and costs. But they're not always available. So the sooner we know about these trips, the easier it'll be for us to make sure that we can plan accordingly.
Anyone else? Comments or questions? Not vote, please.
Sorry. Mrs. Battleato?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes. Next is personnel action items. It's one through six, and then there's two addendum items, seven and eight. Number seven is what Steve had mentioned earlier about his authority to hire. And in case we get a candidate that can start early, we can do that. So is there a motion? Any discussion?
Item number eight, what is the fitness running club?
So that's one of several clubs that we have offered at times throughout the school year. So we have a set number of clubs that is outlined in the teacher's collective bargaining agreement. But I believe, I don't remember if it was the last negotiations period or the time before that, we negotiated, which I thought was a great opportunity for both the teachers and the board, opportunities for teachers to submit a proposal for pretty much any club, as long as we were able to find, you know, academic or social benefit for the students and as long as it fit within the parameters that we've established. It was like 16 hours of meeting time and prep time, et cetera. So we've run a fitness club before. A lot of it really just depends on whether or not we have staff available to run it. Mrs. Herter is interested, so she applied and we'll be able to have our fitness and running club. I don't remember exactly in the past what grade levels it encompassed, and I don't know exactly what she's planning on. It could be a 3.5, it could be a 6.8, it could be a 3.8. You know, I'm sure Ms. Decataldo knows, it's just not something that I was able to discuss with her before then.
Anyone else with questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Battleato?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes. Next is business service action items, items one through 11, and addendum items 12 and 13. Is there a motion? Any discussion?
I wanted to thank Joseph, when I read it, I don't want to butcher the last name, for donating some books for us. Donations are always welcomed. So thank you.
Joe, I'm going to butcher it. I'm going to try and say it. Mangiaccino, I've known for eight years, and I still can't pronounce his name. Dr. Nazinski, the superintendent prior to me, brought Joe in for some professional development needs, not just with administration, but also with our teachers. He's been retired for some time, but now tells me that he's retired-retired. So this is probably the last time, the last opportunity we'll have to work with him. So he also had a series of professional books for our teachers and for administrators. And he, it was a win-win. He was looking to get rid of them, and we were happy to add them to our professional library.
Please note that the contract is awarded to, for HVAC renovations and not for media center. It's just a typo.
Yep. Pretty interesting numbers there.
Yeah.
Item 12, Steve? That's...
Do you want me to get into what that is?
Just briefly. Only because it's an addendum?
So there is a federal grant opportunity that was presented. It was initially communicated in the summer, and a couple training opportunities were provided late summer and then a couple others in September. It's for a high-impact tutoring grant. So it's really designed for third and fourth grade students in the areas of math and language arts to receive additional tutoring, to support their learning acceleration with the idea that those are the students who were most impacted by the health pandemic, right? Because when we closed for that school year, the current fourth grade were kindergartners, and I can speak to that as a parent of a current fourth grader. And the current third grade were in their pre-kindergarten year. The year after that, which again, I think all of you who have kids around or older, around that age or older can tell, like, that is a pretty, those are two pretty important years in the development of our students. And they not only were in school less than they ever had because of shortened days and cohorts, socializing at that time was also extremely restrictive. We were wearing masks. We were socially distanced. You only had at most half of the kids in your class present at any given time. There were no lunches. We couldn't eat lunch together. There was no recess. Phys ed was virtual, art was virtual, STEM was virtual, music was virtual. So really, the impact of those kids was pretty dramatic. It's a really wonderful idea. The reason I chuckle, as Gil brought it up, salt in the wound, is A, there was not a lot of time to get this grant written. And for a school that doesn't really have the resources that larger districts do, like grant writers, it kind of falls on one or two people. In this case, it was me. And the grant writing was extremely intense. It was, it was long, it was detailed. And my understanding is if awarded the grant, an allocation, we have $38,000, there is going to be four very, bless you, four very extensive reporting periods that we'll then have to take the time to report on with a lot of data. That being said, I felt as though it was in our students' best interest to apply for the grant. It was due four o'clock this afternoon. I think I submitted at 9:30 this morning after Debbie and Carissa got me a few finishing pieces that I needed to upload and submit. And now it's just kind of wait and see. The grant period is supposed to be October 11th through August. The proposal that I submitted would be after-school tutoring for third and fourth graders. The cohort cannot be more than three students. I'd have two maths at third, two maths in fourth, two language arts in third, two language arts in fourth, three times a week for an hour each for a 25-week period. Whether or not I have confidence that we'll get approval letters by October 11th, that's a whole nother question because it's a lot of work to review. So we're just going to kind of wait and see. But fingers crossed that this is something we can do for our kids.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Battleato?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
A yes with an abstention from number 10 for the facilities request approval. The first item listed there for the soccer club, a volunteer within, so I just prefer to abstain from that.
Thank you.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes. Okay, that takes us to new business. Anyone with new business for the board?
I have something. I'm heading a huge, like, Veterans Month initiative for the month of November with my organization, and it got me thinking about the school. Veterans Day is November 11th. Do we currently have any fundraisers, acknowledgements? Do we do anything as a school for veterans on that day or that month?
If there is something that we do well?
Yeah, that's right.
That's it. If you want to talk offline, Kat, the young guy, who's my direct secretary, is the point person for Veterans Day. Yeah, we go above and beyond. For to promote, to promote all of that and to recognize our veterans, yes.
Respecting the privacy of the staff here, do you currently have any veterans on the staff?
We do.
We do?
Yep.
I like to volunteer to, I want to do something for them myself.
So let's, let's talk offline. Maybe not tonight, but at some point within the next couple of weeks. And I can give you an idea as a new board member and a parent of a pretty young child, I can give you kind of an idea of what we do. If you're interested, I actually think on our YouTube channel, we have, we livestreamed and recorded last year's veterans program. It's, it's a little, it's a little long, but it's cute. It's, it's, we, it's quite, it's quite a deal.
Very pleased that you responded so quickly with it.
And this is an initiative, my understanding, was started by Superintendent McCann.
Yes.
Prior, he was an interim superintendent. He was also Navy?
I think it was Air Force.
I know, I think Lynn was Air Force or had them reversed. Lynn was Navy and McCann's Air Force. So our interim principal, our interim superintendent, were both retired veterans, and they started this initiative. Dr. Nazinski, our previous superintendent, was a Marine who continued the initiative. Mrs. Decataldo served in the Army. And I know of at least one other, and I'm sure we have others currently, who are veterans in the school.
Great. Thank you.
It's quite a, it's quite an event. It's quite an event.
And seeing as our board goals, I'll just put a plug. October 11th is our first meeting for the Sussex County School Boards Association. We have a very full agenda with the main presentation being on school safety and security, presentation from the Sussex County Prosecutor, along with a sergeant from the School Safety and Outreach Unit for the New Jersey State Police. So it is in-person and online at the Newton Country Club, dinner at 6, meeting at 6:45.
What's the exact date again? I'm sorry.
October 11th.
On our committee agendas for all three committees, I added a line for the school route plan that we briefly discussed. The chief Pittiger had contacted me the day of the committee meetings, which is when I shared it out with you, asking if our board would approve the plan in discussing the plan that was approved by the town council previously. And it was a study conducted by the town engineers. After discussing with the board, it seemed that there were questions and some concerns related to the plan. The next day, I reached out to Chief Pittiger and I copied Brian McNeely, who's our town administrator, asking if there would be an opportunity for them or anyone or the engineer to come do a presentation on the plan to our Board of Education. The chief responded today, sharing, paraphrasing, that the discussion and comment portion of the project is closed and that he doubts that with a resolution already passed, that he doesn't foresee the council approving funding to the consulting group to write a presentation. He was not speaking on behalf of them, but that, those were his words. My recommendation to the board would be if you have specific questions or if you'd like to raise concerns, I would be more than happy to collect your feedback and communicate that to Chief Pittiger, the town administrator, and the mayor, and the town council, to see if we can get any, any type of feedback there. Based on the feedback that I heard at committee, it was my recommendation to table any sort of approval or getting a motion on the agenda to approve this plan. I don't believe that it is a requirement of the board to approve the plan anyway. So I don't know if anybody has any feedback, anything you'd like to add. I'm open.
I just, in the document, it states a procedure to make sure that it's updated, right? There's a procedure that goes through. And the first thing that jumped off the page is that we've changed our start and end time. Yet the document has the old start and end time. It's just a clerical thing at this point. You know what I mean? To, to get it, to have the right times on it.
Well, when the study was conducted, it was September of '22. So the times in which they studied the crossing routes with the survey, that was appropriate times for our school. However, it didn't include the crossing time for Lenape, which was much earlier. The, the times on the last page of the appendix that they have the crossing guards assigned are outside of our current arrival and dismissal. It is a good possibility, and I'm, if it wasn't communicated to them, I take full responsibility that they may not have seen that we were changing times. I would hope that they did. We've sent instant alerts, we've asked for nixels, we kind of put it out there as clearly as we could. That in itself is something that I will address to make sure that those times are changed and fixed. But the report in the study itself, you know, the content within, I think is more of what I'm looking for feedback on.
Well, the thing is, because I heard that at the meeting, at the committee meeting, but this, the report is germane to only Valley Road School. The assessment is prepared to address the needs of the Burrows Valley Road School, which serves K to 8. There was no, the high school was never included in this.
Oh, that, that in itself could be a flaw of the report.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, the report did what it said it was going to do. It's almost the reverse of what the GAS project was, right? They went to the high school and asked what their needs were and never asked us. As the local district here, they asked us and never asked the high school. So...
Right, it's that the impetus of the report was the death of a student who went to tech. So the whole thing doesn't make sense.
I'm not arguing, I'm not disagreeing with you. It's just that when I, when I went through the finer print of it, this here report is only for the K to 8. And I don't know how you could eliminate the high school. You know what I mean?
Or any of the schools our kids go to where they need to use our roads.
And I mean, the report's flawed in and of itself because it found that we don't need crossing guards at certain key intersections, but parents don't send their, let their kids walk to school from those sections of Stanhope because it's dangerous. As somebody who spent a decade on the wrong side of Brooklyn Road, like, my child was never going to walk to school as long as we lived in that section of Stanhope. So it's self-perpetuating, like, they don't see a need for crossing guards because nobody sends their kid to school, walks their kid to school, but nobody walks their child to school because it's dangerous to get across certain intersections during those times of the morning. So the entire, to me, the entire report is flawed.
Yeah. Of course, when it started out, people were working their kids because we went from busing and then there was no busing. So parents then started working their kids. But over time, they, it's a chicken or egg, okay? Are parents not letting their kids walk because it's not safe, there aren't enough crossing guards? So do you put the crossing guards and then the kids will come? You know what I mean? So I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think this report addressed any of that, any of it.
What are the, where there are associated costs, like crossing guards, in the plan? Is that, is that projected as a district expense or a town expense?
That's a town expense. That was, and that was at the time the busing left, when courtesy busing left, the town did assure the board that they would take care of any crossing guards because legally that's their responsibility to take care of the cost of the crossing guards.
What does it mean for us that the town adopted the plan, that they approved it? Are they saying, yes, we're going to fund the recommendations in the plan? Like, what logistically does that mean when they say, yes, we approved the plan?
It justifies them not having any crossing guards because there's nobody crossing the street. So that's the impact to us.
And when you look at the numbers, first of all, the way it's worded, the way they worded, I found it very cumbersome. You know, with when, how they determine whether or not kids, it was viable to cross or not cross. The seconds had by the opening times divided by the amount of minutes, it just, just seemed a little too sterile for me. It kind of took the human component out of it. You know, you're not looking at Brooklyn Road and clearances and all that. You know, there was a lot more to it, but... So are we looking to, we're looking to hear back from them on this?
I don't anticipate any other response from them. If, if the board or if any individual... So here's, here's what I would be happy to do. I would be happy to compile any questions or concerns that you may like forwarded from the board. As Stanhope residents, you're all within your rights to attend a town council meeting and ask those questions directly. If you'd like, you can reach out to your mayor, you can reach out to your town council, you can reach out to the town administrator as well. Those are all things that you can do. Compiling questions and concerns coming from, from me makes it more of, I guess, a board initiative? makes it more of, I guess, a board initiative. So, like I said, there's, I don't know if there's any action, specific action that needs to happen, but I'm happy to support you in whichever you may decide to move forward with.
I think there's a council meeting Tuesday, this Tuesday.
Yeah, and my impression is from the email that Steve got that the answer will be the comment period is closed and the report is adopted. So, they're not going to be willing to have much discussion about it. As a board, we have two decisions. One is we do nothing and don't bring it up, and it's the town's. Or we bring it up and we say we don't approve it so that there's that separation, if that's what the board feels, because it doesn't reflect our actual needs as they are present today. And again, will that have any impact? Probably not, not right now, but maybe.
I just thought it was a little strange that they didn't include the high school.
Correct, exactly. They didn't include us when they did the study. They didn't inform us, they didn't engage us.
Yep.
We were engaged after the study was conducted. I was asked to sit in on a meeting with Chief Pittiger, and I don't remember his name, but he was the lead engineer for the town.
Okay.
He asked me to take a look at the report, which I also shared it with Gil. We had questions. I said that there were concerns, and I had expected to hear back with, I guess, another opportunity to talk and provide some feedback. And I heard nothing until last Wednesday when I was told, this is the report, it's been approved.
We apologize, I feel like I'm getting up to speed on it. So, what's included in the report? Does that represent significant changes from what's currently in place? And what's currently in place, like, we have concerns with a lack of safety measures currently?
My understanding is that there's not a whole lot of change to what's currently in place. They've already reduced crossing guards. Crossing guards, again, to my understanding, are not being reduced as a result of this survey. It's already been done. The way I interpret the survey is that it's justification for the previous reduction of crossing guards. I shared this report with the high school, who had not received it previously, who reached out, because I shared crossing guard concerns, and there was a miscommunication. And they were told, we're not reducing crossing guards. In fact, we're adding crossing guards. It's because they were significantly reduced previously. So, again, I think it's more than anything else. If you read the report, it states all of the areas where it's not safe to cross. Again, to your point, Mrs. Battalato, I don't know if a crossing guard is going to change that at all. So, again, I don't know if there's anything that the board can or should do that's really up to you. I'm happy to facilitate and support however I can. I don't know if anything's going to change, you know, other than just sharing, sharing the concerns that you do have.
Anybody? I may attend Tuesday night's meeting and just ask some questions. You know what I mean? At the meeting, and just, and again, my asking questions, I'm going to have to do it under the hat of a citizen because I, there's nothing on the floor that says this board has an opinion one way or the other. So, when I discuss it with them, I'm going to discuss it as just me. Okay, so we understand that going into this? Okay. All right, any other new business? Any old business?
I put down basketball court on there. I know last time we were discussing the safety of it. I wanted for, we are in the process of having people come out, look at it, assess the situation, and give us quotes as to how to better fix it. They did say that just sealing and doing like a patch job up until is not really what we're looking for, would just be a waste. So, we do have some companies coming in and telling us our best course of action to remedy the situation faster.
For following up.
Yeah, of course.
Did we have a plan from the architect?
Well, we went up a bit originally, and it was exorbitant. So, we are just kind of doing a little, little side, you know, looking into it on our own.
But I mean, when you meet with the contractors that we're asking, are you showing them the architect's plan?
I'm not, no. I'm just kind of giving, what we're saying is come check out the area. Please make this better. And by better, I don't, we said no patching. The nets have to, the, excuse me, the basketball hoops have to be stable, which they're not right now. They need to be ducked about the outside. They need to be compounded, packed in. The asphalt needs to be redone. It basically what the, what the contractors were asking, but not from like a large bid perspective.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm treating it as if we were just doing like a side job from the school